Good evening. I'm Brian Saul, the Chair of the Howard Board of Appeals. I've called this meeting to order. Time is now 6:30. Welcome to meeting the Howard Board of Appeals on this date, January 31st, 2024. The purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications before the Board of Appeals, which have been brought pursuant to the bylaw of the Town of Howard in Massachusetts Zoning Enabling Act. As required by law, the town may audio and video record this meeting, which we are. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. During this meeting, the Chair will recognize promptly a member of the Board, Secretary, and Attorney presenting the case to inform the Chair if a protocol is not being followed. While in open session, those wishing to present comments or ask questions regarding a case are requested to fill out information form on the podium. Just ask for a name and your address for those who were not given a case but are going to speak in behalf of case in open session. That's on the podium. The Chair asks, I'd like to ask each Board member to identify themselves, starting with Chris.
Chris Murphy.
David Nunley.
Alexander Donahue.
Brian Sullivan.
Dave Ryer.
Kenneth Dixon.
So, why don't we, Al, go ahead and call the first case?
All right. I'll call case number 2023-36. David Crosby. Property is located 481 Depot Street. Accessory map, 36 parcel B1 in an IL and RR zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit for a multifamily building. This case is, the applicant has withdrawn from this case, and it will be rescheduled at a further date.
All right, well, we received a, we received a request for withdrawal. So, just opening up this meeting on that case, and we received a letter. Would you kindly pass along the Board of Appeals this request, matter of ZBA 2023-36, currently scheduled for continued hearing on January 31st, 2024, to be withdrawn without prejudice. As reasons therefore, I have filed subsequent application to the Board of Appeals relative to this project. I do not plan attending the January 31st meeting unless you believe in my attendance is required, which we told him was not. My thanks in regards to you and the Board. So, I'm making that a motion that we do allow this case to be withdrawn without prejudice. Do I have a second?
Second, sir.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Just a minute of discussion on it?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I'm assuming, it's not clear, but he says he's filed a subsequent application.
Yes, he's filing an application for, I believe, for a variance.
Okay, but I wonder, does he intend that to be an amendment of the current filing, or it's a new application?
It could be a new application.
Okay, only because of the Mullins Rule thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, that means in the next case, everybody, I believe, and I'll check it out, but everyone will be, it's going to be a brand-new filing. So, he's withdrawing this case, and he's going to not be coming back in with an adjustment. It's going to be a new case.
Okay.
He'll have a new case number.
Okay. In that case, that was the only comment, just wanted to talk about that.
If that isn't the situation, then the Mullins situation is going to come up.
Right, and I'll raise it because I'm not going to be here in February. Remember last time there was a question of how many numbers we'd have and whatnot, so...
But I do believe it's been withdrawn, and there'll be an entirely new case, which means then I can appoint voting members that night.
Okay.
Okay? Good, good question. Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Case number 2024-01, Mark and Allison Michaud through Thomas A. Moore of 11 Cherry Lane, Bedford, New Hampshire. Property is located at 13 Braddock Street. Accessory map, M7 parcel F13 in RH1 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit from 325 Attachment 2 Table 2 area regulation to raise, replace, pre-existing non-conforming garage to create an accessory apartment, accessory dwelling, excuse me, pursuant to the Howard's Bylaw 325-54 and MGL Chapter 48, Section 6.
The Board of Health indicates a project will require approval from their Board, indicating a septic permit will need to be applied for, by a licensed septic installer, and complete full plans for the ADU and main dwelling will need to be submitted with the septic plans, and I'm sure you're aware of that.
Yes, yep, yep.
Okay, great. The Police Department and the Historic Commission had no concerns, and nor the Town Department submitted any input, you know, on the project, okay? And I'd like to assign voting on this. So, that would be Al, myself, David Nunley, Chris Murphy, and David Ryer. And I'd like to have, ask the applicant to identify themselves, and those assisting you in your presentation.
Thomas Moore from Thomas Moore Design Company, representing Allison Michaud and her husband Mark. We are requesting a special permit to raise and replace the existing garage that we have there. The existing garage was built in roughly around 1940. It's 20 by 32. It's time to take it down, and we're looking to put up a new garage that's 26 by 32, so a little bit bigger, and we're adding a second story on this, which will be the ADU apartment, a one-bedroom apartment. The Michauds have owned the property since 2009, and this is the first part of a product for the whole property. We're starting with this, and eventually, we're going to be, well, we're in the process of designing the house, which will design it to meet all the requirements, all the setback requirements, so... The proposed new garage is a Gambrel-style garage, again, with the second-story ADU. The existing garage right now is 1.5 feet off the property line to the north. The new proposed garage, we're going to slide it so that it's 10 feet away from that property line, which will help the neighbor, help us with landscaping along that side of the property, construction of the garage itself. In the, we had submitted some, the original plans, and then we submitted some revised plans that showed a stairway on the rear of the garage. That piece, in talking with Dan at Moran Engineering, he said there's a section in the bylaw that allows us to take a stairway and project into the setback, but no more than two feet. This particular, the stairway on the back of the garage, I have that section here in the, if you'd like a copy of it. It's Section 325-18, Section F, Number 3, that it talks about projections required yards or other required open spaces are permitted, subject to the following. And this item, Number 3, says calls for windowsills, chimneys, roofies, fire escape, fire towers, storm enclosure, or similar architectural structures, or steps, or stoops over four feet in height, not more than two feet. I can...
I believe we all have our, we're all set with that, I believe. But thank you for that, that offer.
Okay, I think, because I saw that Rachel had said because of that stairway, we were going to require a variance. I think it's still for a special permit, but I'll leave that up to you.
Sure, I understand.
We feel that this proposed, new proposed garage will not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood and the current existing garage. And we respectfully request the granting of a special permit, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. We'll open up the questions with Ken.
I'll defer to the end if I could.
Okay, that's great. We'll go to the other end. Chris?
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
Okay, what's your expected timeframe for demolition construction?
I believe we were hoping to start this spring.
And what's your anticipation of, you know, maintaining all your vehicles on the property, construction vehicles on the property?
I think there's enough, there's enough other property, you know, at where the garage is, plus on the other end of the property, for vehicles to keep them on the property.
Okay, so most, if not all, you feel would be able to maintain on the property?
Yep, yep.
You mentioned, and I apologize if I wasn't paying strict attention, when you did your presentation, you mentioned about you're in the process of designing the house.
Yes.
So, is that the main house is going to be redesigned?
Yes.
Is that going to be a tear-down eventually?
It will be a tear-down eventually, yes. And it's proposed that that, that the house, that will conform to setbacks and height restrictions and all zoning requirements.
All right. Now, the, yeah, thank you for bringing up the situation of the stairs. I'm going to want to discuss that as well, and I appreciate that, because I had, the reason why Rachel brought it up was that when I went over the plans, I looked at the 22.5, and then I looked at the stairs, the 19.4, and I just raised that issue with her, just to double-check what the situation was.
Yep.
The, on your existing driveway, is that going to be torn up to the 11 feet, whatever that's, right now, existing driveway is like two feet or three feet from the lot line?
Yep.
And you've shown that the new driveway to be, I think, like 10 feet back, you know, so are you going to tear up all the, all the, look, the existing driveway that's going to be within that 10-foot area?
It'll all be torn up with the excavation.
Okay, so it's all going to be, okay.
That's all going to be torn up.
Now, with the ADU going in, and I'm sure it's, it should be fine, but is there going to be any lighting, exterior lighting that's going to be directed into the butters yard? And what are you, how are you handling the grading? Are you going to end up putting in any kind of retaining wall?
On the, on the right-hand side of the garage, because the grade does start to slope up.
It's like two feet, you're like, going to be like, within, you're pushing it over, so it's going to be like, like, two feet into that hill.
Yep, so on that's...
Is that right about that footage?
Yep, yep. On the, on the right side of the garage, my foundation wall is going to come up a couple of feet up above the slab elevation.
Okay.
You can see on the, on the, on the front elevation, there's a little bit of a step up on that right-hand side, which will kind of take care of, I can explain it to you or show it to you if you don't see it, but, and that was to take, take into consideration some of the grade slope that we have.
Okay, so you are taking, I just was curious about that. And, so you're not, you're just going to be raising up the height of the garage wall?
Yep.
But you're not going to have any type of additional retaining wall there or anything?
There might be something out front a little bit, just to feather some of that grade in, into the driveway itself.
Okay.
I don't, it wouldn't be any more than a couple feet high.
All right. And is there any runoff issue now with water going into the butters yard, given the slope? And, and, you know, just...
We have to keep everything on the property itself, so...
Right, and you will be.
As far as any, any of the runoff from the roof?
That's going to be buried in the ground.
Be buried into some, a dry well.
Okay, David?
How many cars is the existing garage for? Two?
The existing car is a two-car garage, yep.
Okay. And the other question is, why do you think it's a special permit? Because under 325-54, the special permits really only apply to single or two-family residential structures. This isn't that. It seems to me it falls under A7, alteration or extension of other structures which require a variance.
I'm not sure how to answer that question, other than the, you know, I was, I was expecting a special permit.
Okay, I think we should, we'll discuss this when we discuss it among the Board members. Okay, thank you. Ken?
Okay, I just want to be real clear on the request for the special permit. I'm looking at your original application dated 12/27. Talks about a side yard setback, existing 1.5 feet, proposed four feet, although the plans show 10 feet. I just, there's an inconsistency there.
Because there was a revision, there was a revised plan, a revised site plan, that pushed it and moved it to that 10 feet.
You would have received the, it was in your packet, the revised site plan. I think that's why it's not...
That's why I see the 10 feet, and that's why I was looking at it.
Right, that's why the difference, because when the application was done, it was done the original plan, and then I had, then they did, then they submitted revision last week.
So, I'll go back then. So, your request for the special permit is merely for one setback to the north? Because the other statement I want to make, because you're probably well aware, we revised our ADU, the accessory dwelling unit, at this town meeting in May of last year, and it speaks specifically to how that accessory dwelling unit can be used. And if you're applying for the ADU, I'm going to read this from, from the article itself. Only one of the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented at any given time, and if rented, shall be rented for a term of no less than six consecutive months. I want to make sure we're really clear on that. And also, prior to the issue of a building permit, the owner shall submit a notarized affidavit that states the owner is or will be in residence of one of the units.
That's correct.
So, you're clear on that as well?
Yep.
Okay, and I have no further question or comment.
I'd like to open a public meeting, and ask if any, if anybody in the public that wants to speak to this case. Hearing none, I'd...
Before that, let me ask one more question of the applicant before we close the public hearing. If you did require a variance, what would your argument be as to why you're entitled to a variance? You know, just refresh your memory, the variance, to get a variance, you, the need must be because of soil conditions, shape, topography of the land or structure, specific to this piece of property. There has to be significant or substantial financial hardship if the variance isn't granted. And then the third requirement is no substantial detriment to the public good, and that the grantee will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. So, those are the statutory requirements for a variance. Go ahead.
Well, I'm not sure if you, we could meet any of those requirements for a variance.
Okay, if I could continue to comment on that, Dave Rider?
Yes.
In the town meeting where the, was passed, under Section K, it says, "A zoning board of appeals may grant a special permit for pre-existing non-conforming principal dwellings and residential accessory buildings that do not comply with the setback or lot coverage requirements in the applicable zoning district." That would lead me to believe that we do have the authority to issue a special permit.
That was the point I was going to bring up, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
But the building's being demolished and rebuilt. In that case, you optimize that for the existing building to remain as this existing building? It seems to me they can replace it with that, as a special permit case.
Is this a new one that Rachel gave us the other day?
On the ADU?
Yeah, she sent it out, and she also provided it for us this evening.
Is it part of the use regulations?
No, it's, it's, well, it was the article that was passed at the town meeting.
Oh, okay, yeah. We did what that...
And the reason we included that in the town meeting and in the warrant that was passed is specifically for cases like this. We know we need additional housing, workplace housing, affordable housing.
Here's the, okay, just one second, Dave.
Yeah, that's the one I just, I was looking at there, okay.
And Chris, to your point, as I read K again, "The zoning board of appeals may grant a special permit for pre-existing non-conforming principal dwellings and residential accessory buildings that do not comply with the setback or lot coverage requirements in the applicable zoning district." Punctuation means a lot, so as I look at that, they, I think that non-conforming principle, pre-existing non-conforming principal dwellings is a category in itself, and then it goes on to say, "and residential accessory buildings."
See, I agree, that's how I agree to it as well.
The only possible issue, I mean, might be the fact that it's, you raise and replace the garage, then come back for the ADU special permit, if it's, now it's existing, but I don't think that's really needed to put the person, applicant, through that.
But the garage is an accessory building residential, so I think, and I had not read these, I guess after they came out, I dumped them in my file and never got back to them, the new provision, but I think you're absolutely right, Ken, that we have that authority.
I think we can handle this as a special permit.
Yeah.
And that's why I raised it for discussion, because it...
Thank you.
It didn't seem correct that we'd have to require, and we've had a million discussions about garages, and they always fall through the cracks before this, that we've had to require a variance. So, that, I'm done. So, if you want to close the public meeting, I'll so move.
Well, actually, why don't we keep it over here, and I just want to go back to 325-18F. So, is that, when I first read it, that not more than two feet, that means, does that mean that the step or stoop or whatever can't be blown two feet wide, or the fact that the, the, going into the, into the setback cannot be by two feet? That's correct. Is that how you read that? So, that the staircase, the fire case...
Are we reading the same one? Do you have a new amendment on yours?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at 325-18F.
Yep, 18F.
So...
Where's the two feet, though?
Right here. That's, that's what's being...
Oh, okay, not more than two feet.
Well, they talk about, the, the beginning, the first word in F is projections into the required yards.
Yeah, I think it's...
Okay, all right, thank you.
Not more than two feet into the setback, I believe.
So, the existing, the proposed staircase, which is eight inches, I guess, into the setback, would be allowed under that, under that code. Is that correct?
That's how I read it. I can't go more than two feet.
Right, right. Because right now...
The stairway goes up, it's over four feet, it's going to go up to the second level?
Yeah, it's more than, it's more than four feet in height.
Yeah, not more than two feet, so they're only in there by...
1.1 feet.
Eight inches.
Six, right, half a foot.
Yeah, well, actually, eight inches, yes, more than half a foot.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's permitted under that one.
Okay, all right.
I have a question, I forgot, of the ADU. As I remember reading this, the ADU must be, it has to be rented for six months, as it was indicated. The main house has to be occupied by the owner.
I never have rented my house out.
Okay.
I live in it.
Yeah, very clear, you can't rent...
Not all the time, but I'm, and I will never rent it out.
Okay.
I'm just too picky. Nobody's sleeping in my bed.
All right, so, hearing no one who wants to speak to this application in the public, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion, Ken, second. Do we have any additional questions from...
We've got a vote on that motion.
Okay, yes, thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. You want to write it down in front of me, my outline, I didn't do it. Any additional discussion by the Board? Do the questions, the applicant?
No, sir.
No, thanks, Ken, for coming up with that ADU provision there.
Right now, clerk, and I'll ask the clerk for a motion on the case. Oh, wait, first of all, I just need to follow the fact that I do recommend we, we still have the, the, you know, the time restriction of...
Yeah, I think so down there, definitely.
Okay, so, on restrictions, so we need the life of the property, it's over here, and then, going to keep all the vehicles, okay, so, three things over here, and it looks like it did.
I just have one question myself, all right?
Yeah.
When would you anticipate the beginning of the removal of the main house?
Oh, not, not until maybe October. I'd like to use it all summer, and then do any construction off-season, because I love all my neighbors, but a prior neighbor did not give us that courtesy, but I will give everyone the courtesy. And we're hoping to get the garage fully framed up by the end of June, so that no noise is bothering everyone, and they're just, it's a garage, so there's not much to do inside, you know, like the first floor, finish the floor, and then the upstairs, it's very simple, you know? My intent is to live there while they do the house.
There's Cape Cod.
Yeah, but I mean...
Contractors aren't always as quick.
Yeah, tis true.
So, you plan on occupying the ADU space while the main house is being done?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's my, that's why it's happening. I need somewhere to live.
All right. Case number, I haven't got my main sheet here. Yeah, I got it right here. Oh, I see it right on there, it's white, yep. Okay, case number 24, 2024-01, Mark and Allison Michaud through Thomas A. Moore. The owners of the property located at 13 Braddock Street. They have been issued, granted rather, a special permit. The applicant has been granted a special permit and replaced the pre-existing non-conforming garage to create a structure with garage on the second floor of accessory dwelling unit pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaw 325-54, MGL Chapter 48, Section 5. I might have to read this just for a second. The proposed structure and...
Wait a minute, Al, before you go on, we might also want to reference Article 37 of the code. That's the one that has to do with the ADUs.
It's Article what?
It's Article 37 of the...
Article 325, the code.
Chapter 325, Article 37.
All right, the proposed structure and additional habitable space are to be created will be in intensification of pre-existing non-conforming, and will not substantially be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current structure, because it will not create an additional negative impact with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. create an additional negative impact with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Granting is consistent with the Howard zoning bylaw, MGL, uh, bylaws, and MGL forty-eight. Gale, Dietrich, and related cases, as there will be an intensification of one or more existing non-conformities. No non, no non-conformity, no new non-conformity, rather, and no substantial detriment to the neighborhood on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The, uh, relief is granted expressly under, as here. Be granted on the following conditions, which are, during the life of the project, there be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping between June thirty and Labor Day of any year. That the, for the life of the, uh, for, that for the life of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not on the public way, street or road. A violation of the terms of these conditions, a special permit, may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaws pursuant to three, uh, to general law forty-eight, section seven, and the Howard zoning bylaws, as they may be amended from time to day, time to time.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor, voting?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved, granted.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, good luck.
Luck in the project.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Over here, just want to get these things stamped, guys, just a second. David, that would, that would be referencing chapter three twenty-five, Article thirty-seven?
I think I wrote eighty thirty-seven on the paper.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
I don't remember without looking at it. It says, it's chapter three twenty-five, Article thirty-seven.
Okay. Okay, Al, I just call on this case.
Uh, case number twenty twenty-four zero-two, Coastline Construction, Inc., through James M. Norcross Esquire. The property is located, uh, four sixty-six Route, excuse me, Route one, Unit one, Route twenty-eight. Assesses map thirteen parcel FBB one. In the RM and CV zoning district, the applicant seeks a special permit, three twenty-five fifty-four two, non-conforming structures, uses, and three twenty-five attachment to take to area regulation to construct additional addition and front porch on a pre-existing non-conforming commercial structure pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw three twenty-five fifty-four and MGL forty-eight, section six. Uh, the only document that came back with this, and you've already done this, is the planning board. I think it just indicates the planning board was taking this case up on the, uh, the fifth of January, which I'm assuming is long gone by, obviously.
Yes, we went to the planning board on the fifth, yeah.
Just add notation in the paper, that's all.
Uh, guys, just saying, uh, just to, sometimes I, we got it wide-headed with the planning board would be because this is a commercial project, and they're going to increase square footage. On a commercial project, the planning board requires site plan review when any, any square footage is increased. So that's why it had to go in front of the planning board for, to, for site plan review. Even though it's a small, little addition, it's commercial, there's no square footage.
That's correct.
All right, so that's why it was there. Okay, it, uh, and as Al said, nor the town department submitted any input. Voting on this case would be Al, Dave, Al Dunne, Dave Monnelly, Chris Murphy, David Ryer, and Kenneth Dixon. And I'd like to ask the applicant to introduce themselves and you, one assisting.
Sure, good evening, James Norcross, representing Coastline Construction Company. Coastline purchased this, um, building back in twenty twenty-one. If, uh, if you look at the site plan, it's building number two on that plan. And it's actually, it's a little bit of a unique property, it's, uh, part of a condominium, so it's a four-building condominium. Uh, there's three commercial structures, and there's a residential, single-family home in the back, which you don't see too often. Um, the lot is split, I won't say split, it's about one-third in the RM zoning district and about two-thirds in the CV zoning district. The, um, the building is actually historic, it dates back to the eighteen hundreds. Uh, and so part of the, uh, plans for Coastline is they're going to put on a, um, porch on the front, sort of return some of the, um, characteristics to that time period. It was well-received by the historic commission as a nice addition to, again, bring back more of that historic feel. Uh, the planned use for the property is that of an office, um, for their office, for Coastline. They currently have space in Dennis, they've been looking for quite a while, bought this a few years ago, been very busy, like most of the builders around, but they're now at a time where they want to move in, put their staff in there for, um, office and conference rooms and that sort of use going forward. The actual work is pretty minor, it's, it's squaring off the back right of the building that'll allow for more office space on the first floor, which is important for them, because they want to have most of their office on the first floor, and the upstairs used for storage and overflow and stuff like that. Um, there would be the addition of a dormer on the backside of the property as well, so it's going to go up. So it's basically the same height and size from front to back going forward, would be the plan. Um, so we think it's a pretty minor addition to the property, we think it'll be nice to have it, um, in use, and in use for a local business. And so that would be our presentation this evening, and happy to answer any questions.
Good. Ken?
Again, clarifying the request for, for special permit. Is it merely the setback on two different, going, looking at your original application?
Yes.
Is that why you're here this evening?
It is the, um, we meet the setback to the street, even with the addition, it's a twenty-five-foot setback, we're at thirty-four feet. So it is just the setback on the, I guess, east side of the property.
Again, based on looking at this application, side yard right, it says, uh, required twenty feet, current is six point three eight, proposed is six point three eight. And then the, any setback on the left, which is currently at twelve point five four, required is twenty, still twelve point five four. So I guess maybe one's not relevant because you're not moving the one to the west, you're only moving one to the east.
Well, that's confusing, because we have to use, it's, it's condominiums with one property. So when we say the setback to the west, that's actually for building number one on that plan.
Okay, thank you.
And so, because, because it's one piece of property, so we have to list the, the non-conformities as it relates to any building on that property. So if you look at, the six point three eight is actually for building number three, which is the building to the rear of our structure that we're talking about.
Yeah, that was, I was confused.
It's confusing, but there's really no other way to do it, because again, it's, when it's a condominium form of ownership, it's technically one property. So these are the various non-conformities along all the lot lines for any building.
Thank you, that was, it wasn't registering.
Yeah, no, I don't blame you, but it is, it is confusing how that happens with condominiums.
That was my only question.
Yeah, it seems to me this is somewhat like the prior case in that, um, it's neither a single or two-family residential structure, so it seems to fall under three twenty-five fifty-four A seven, alteration or extension of other structures, which would require a variance.
So, um, and I'm familiar with the, um, the Rockwood case and, and, um, that line of, of case law in Massachusetts. So I guess just to explain the background, the original plan that was done by the surveyor had an older zoning district showing a ten-foot setback requirement. So the original plan that we filed with planning board had the wrong zoning district listed on it. So it's ten-foot setback, we met all the, uh, setback requirements for the addition that's, that's planned, and so we didn't think we had to go to zoning at all. Shortly after we filed with planning board, the staff, uh, has a meeting, they bring in all the departments, conservation, planning, zoning. It's actually very helpful for a project, because you get a lot of feedback at once, as opposed to just getting dribs and drabs. And then at that meeting, zoning, um, informed us, say, hey, you're, the plan's actually wrong, you have the wrong zoning district in there, it's a twenty-foot setback, and then they advised us to file for the special permit. So we were sort of acting off the guidance of what we were being told by staff, um, you know, it's one of those things when you're offered an avenue of perhaps least resistance, you generally will take it. So that's why we, again, filed for the special permit application based on that, um, meeting. Um, I, again, I'm familiar with the case law, I mean, I think you can cobble together an argument for a variance. Obviously, we didn't file for one, so we'd have to come back, but, um, you know, again, I think there are some criteria that, that are perhaps reflected with a variance request as well.
I don't know, it just seems to me, um, under our bylaw, I don't see any way to give you a special permit.
Yeah.
Now, you could make an argument for a variance, I'd like to hear that.
Sure, um, so, unique shape of the lot or the building. So I would suggest we do have a rather unique-shaped building currently. If you look at the configuration of our building versus the rest of the buildings, we don't have a square. We have a, a square with a little piece on top of it, and as a result of that, and the current rockwood interpretation in the bylaw, you know, basically, the area that we could, my client could add on to the building is very, very small as a result of that shape. We can add on about, I guess, five feet, essentially, which isn't much of an addition as for what they're trying to do for the interior of the property. So I think, again, as a unique shape, it's not shared by, I get, this doesn't show the whole neighborhood, but it's not shared by any of the lot on that property. You know, hardship argument, um, depending on the nature of the variance, so the, the, uh, lesser of a hardship sometimes you need to show. In this case, again, um, we, my client would not have office space that they feel is necessary, really, for their business that they would like to see in full use as they're.
They might possibly have to rent additional space.
Yeah, they could financially, it's, it's, I don't know if it's worth it for them, if they can't have the space in terms of what they're going to do with the property. They want to be here, they're a growing business, they've started about ten years ago, and have been more and more busy, so they want to take on more and more staff. Does it derogate from the purpose and intent of the bylaw? I mean, again, sideline setback, the goal is to avoid massing, right? Because you don't want big structures five feet off the lot line, so that impacts neighbors, that impacts visual character. Again, we're going closer, but the building's already there, it's not a very large building, I think our building height is, uh,
Thirty-seven point eight.
Thirty-seven point eight, which, um, excuse me, bear with me a second, he has the, um, thirty-seven point eight four, which is about seven feet below the allowable building height. So we're certainly not maxing out to the uppermost regions of the bylaw in terms of building height. So I suggest, in addition of this nature, being very small, at still fifteen feet away from the lot line, it's really not going to create an issue with massing, and I don't think it derogates from the intent of the bylaw in that regard. So, on the fly, I don't have anything else.
Well. Here's a question for, I mean, I'll ask the attorney, but also the board itself. Oh, first of all, just make a suggestion in the future, that you submit the case, you, you put in the alternative.
Yes.
Of variance.
Yep.
So it, it just covers you, so we can just deal with it in one meeting.
Absolutely, yeah, that's, uh.
Just a thought.
Very good suggestion.
Okay.
But remember, counsel said we wouldn't have to re-advertise as long as the project is adequately described in the notice.
Right, yeah.
We can grant the variance tonight without requiring them to re-advertise and come back to us.
Oh, we can?
We can.
Okay. All right, all right, let's, it's, when this project was first done, and I knew, it's very likely, this is, let's say this was, this was done a few years ago, we would have been probably looking at a variance at that time to build the building. Now, once someone builds a building under a variance, and they go to expand it, doesn't that kick in, perhaps, you know, you can go back with a special permit request, because you're, it's an existing building, then it's, you know, so the building's already done. And, and, and I know where you're coming from regarding, referring back to perhaps needing a variance, but the building is built, and at this point, it's a, it's a minor intensification of an existing building.
But it's the nature of the building, it's not a single or two-family dwelling, which is what the special permits cover. All other structures require a variance.
So all commercial structures in town, nothing can be done on a special permit, it has to be, it has to be a variance?
That's my reading of the, our bylaw.
Or they do it by right if they meet.
I never.
Yeah, they can do it by right.
If it's out of, yeah.
Exactly. If it conforms to.
I never picked up on that, I, okay, so.
I, we do, because that's basically all we see is residential. You're exactly right, I didn't, I didn't notice either, you had brought it up.
The only commercial we've seen in, you know, I mean, recently, has, has been a use variance, which was.
Right.
You know, we haven't, we've seen these, but we haven't seen, so.
Uh, we had the bulk building down on twenty-eight next to Villa Roma.
Villa Roma.
And that was a variance, as my recollection. And we granted it.
But this, this property still has a home as part of the property.
As part of the property.
That's in the back.
Way in the back, yeah.
But this is an accessory building to that home, would be the closest thing you could do.
Yeah, it's.
And that, yeah.
I don't think so.
I would love to have a good argument for that, I would be.
I mean, personally, I think that argument justifies a variance. I mean, I was looking at it, and I think the, the structure shape is unique. I mean, it's got that little bite out of it almost, and that's what they're going to fill in.
Yeah.
And the hardship, yeah, because they don't have enough office space, it's going to crimp their operations, they might have to rent someplace else, who knows, maybe move. And I don't think it's going to derogate from the intent of the bylaw, because these commercial buildings are already there in the CB district. So I think they meet the requirements, but I just think for us to be consistent with the requirements of the bylaw, we need to look at a variance, not a special permit, because we don't have any statutory authority to grant a special permit to a commercial building. Well, not statutory, but town statutory, not state.
That's, that's possibly something that needs to be addressed in the bylaws.
Many things, as we've discussed, ad nauseam, need to be addressed in the bylaws.
Well, yeah, no, but it never, yeah.
Well, it's overly penal, in my opinion, that, the way that decision in the bylaw reads for a commercial, because a case like this is really, like, to require a variance is. Right. It's, I don't think it was what they were foreseeing as an issue, I mean, because you're, the goal is always for zoning to, for buildings to come into compliance, if you can. But a property like this, you can never come into compliance, because there's just no room.
Yeah.
In the way they were, so it's.
I understand.
Yeah.
I just think, I don't think we have the authority to give a special permit. I think we have to, if we're going to grant relief, it has to be in the form of a variance. And with regards to the bylaws, the prior case, if they did not have an ADU, they would have had to proceed and justify a variance, because it was a garage.
Correct. I agree with you.
The ADU got them off the hook.
Yep, I agree with you.
And as you guys, well, Al remembers, I don't know if anybody else does, but we used to have a lot of garage.
Don't go too far off the limb with that.
Al remembers it, an apartment, and we wouldn't grant it, because they couldn't justify a variance.
Okay. Um, timeframe? Time frame?
They would like to get started as soon as possible, but realistically, being a condominium, there's still some hoops we've got to go through. The association has sent notification there in favor of, we still have to amend the master deed and all this other stuff, so I would say probably late spring would be the earliest that they would be underway.
Okay. Any issues, obviously, in that it's up to a condominium complex, I'm quite sure, but keeping all your construction vehicles, all going to be maintained on the property?
No, that should be okay, and they're not going to, this is, again, office space, so it's not for the construction vehicles to live, so they have another bay, so they can kind of come back and forth, so that shouldn't be too much of an issue.
And I'm assuming, oh, you, this was before the historic commission back last, last year, is there any change in the plans since that one?
No.
Okay. And out of curiosity, the building permit was pulled last May, but there wasn't a determination letter by the building commissioner until some point in November or whatever in the fall.
Right.
What was the six-month delay and all that?
I don't know, I wasn't involved until late summer, at which point I worked, they asked me to prepare the planning filing for the, or the filing for the Planning Board, because that's, at that time, again, we were showing the 10-foot setback.
Yeah.
So, we thought that was all that was required. So, we filed that, and then when the town noticed the incorrect zoning district, and it was therefore a 20-foot setback instead of 10, that's when they said you have to go to zoning, but in order to you, to this board, but in order to come to this board, you need to get, have a deny, another denial letter from the building commissioner.
Okay, so that's why, all right, thank you.
Yeah, that's kind of the sequence.
All right, all right. The, in the back there, in that corner where the construction's going to be done, there's a, there's a bulkhead.
Yep.
So, does that act, is there a foundation in that building, a crawl space?
It's not a full foundation, I don't think.
All right, so, but where's the access to that, now there's, I don't know whether or not it's, that bulkhead actually works, but you have an access, is it going to be an access point to get into that crawl space, or whatever it is in the foundation?
I don't know the answer to that question, Mr. Chairman, in terms of what the situation is with the basement, I've only, see if we have a basement plan, oh, let's see. So, it looks like they're showing some, so a portion of it, so the new section actually is going to have, I think, a larger basement, it looks like from the plans, the rest of it existing crawl, and so there's going to be stairs, it looks like, coming down into that space.
Oh, so there's going to be a set of stairs going into the basement?
Yeah, that's what they show on the plan.
And that's going to access to get into the.
As far as I understand, Mr. Chairman, we're focused on the first and second.
That's fine, I just, I noticed that, know it's going to go away.
It's a good question.
Well, I try to get at least a couple of good questions in there, that's my goal. All right, I have no other further questions, Al?
No, I have no further questions.
No questions.
No questions. One more question, how high is the deck going to be? Is it going to be under four feet? Let's see, I didn't see it, the height on the.
It's a farmer's porch, so.
Stand there.
So, in terms of, are you, not with the roof, obviously, but from the step, is that what you measure? I guess from the ground to the, I don't see a dimension for that on the plan anywhere.
Let's see, where was it, 1.6 feet is the floor going in? Oh, I see, you've got to put the roof on, though, what's that, nine something? Nine foot ten. For the floor, which is what we consider, so. Well, it's any projection, I'm just looking. Projection.
Well, it's six feet from the main building, and it appears as though it's consistent with the floor of the building.
Yeah, but if it's.
Nine feet plus an overhang?
It's over four feet, it's not supposed to go more than two feet into the setback.
With this one, I'm sorry, Mr. Ryan, we're not actually, this one actually is outside the setback.
I'm sorry?
This is the front. This is the front, we're outside the setback.
That's where that porch is, out front.
Right here, it's the proposed deck, yeah.
Setback's 25, and we're at 30.
Oh, I see, okay.
34, so we actually, we meet that setback.
Okay, but you still have a side setback issue.
That's correct.
I'm looking at the side sixty, okay.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Al, did you, did you, do you have questions?
No, I have, no further questions.
All right, David?
No, no question.
Sorry for the wait, guys, I was trying to make a change or something. Okay, I'd like to open a public meeting, is there anybody in the public that wants to address this application? Hearing none, the chair asked for the, any final comments at all from the board to the questions of the.
I have no comments.
And do you have any final comments?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, I'd like to ask for.
Close the public hearing.
I have a second, Dan.
All those in favor closing?
Aye.
Any additional discussion by the board?
Not here, no.
Other than that, I think we should, I think we should grant relief, and I do think they meet the requirements for variance for this project.
Okay.
Certainly, on the addition, the deck, I don't know, I would just grant it for the whole thing, I guess.
Yeah, actually, and I apologize for bringing this up, the, the application was to construct the addition in the front porch, but the front porch is already in, it's not non-conforming.
Correct, that would be, we would still meet the setbacks, we wouldn't technically need relief for that.
You do.
We do not.
You do not.
We do not, no, we have no, we're well under the coverage, so there's no issue.
Right, I thought so, it's in here, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
I didn't think any relief for it.
No, it would just be the, the rear addition.
So, we don't need to?
No, they do need relief because they have a side setback issue, they don't meet the side setback.
Even, even because of the front porch needs relief?
Well, it's, it's, it's sitting in the side setback, it's 16.07 instead of 20.
Oh, thank you, all right, you're right.
So, they need relief, but I think we should grant that too on the theory that the whole shape of the building is unusual.
Okay. All right, and no further discussion by the board, so I'd like to entertain a motion to close discussion.
So, moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I agree on, um. I want to hear a motion, okay, do you want me to, with the change of variance?
Oh, feel free.
Okay, all right. So, it, you want to make a motion on this case? You know, I have a question when I do the motion, Dave has some point here. Case number 2024-02, Coastal Construction, Inc., care of James M. Norcross Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of the property located at 466 Route 28, Unit 1, Accessus Map 13, Procel FBB1 in the IRM and CV zoning districts. The applicant has been granted a variance to construct an addition in a front porch on a pre-existing non-conforming commercial structure pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws 325-54 and MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6.
No, it's got to be.
It's got to be changed to section, I think, is it 10?
Section 10.
Okay. I'll just check that.
Yeah, that's the variance, section, 40A, section 10.
Yep. And actually, when I, okay, the proposed addition in front porch will be an intensification of pre-existing non-conformities and will not substantially be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current structure because it will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion.
I think you need to read in the justification for the variance.
Right. The board further finds that the condition is specific to this property and does not generally affect the entire district. Now, what's going to be, what am I reading in for the, do I have to add anything more than that?
Is it what you need here?
Yep.
You need to be here.
Yeah, so the board further finds the condition is specific to this property and does not generally affect the entire district in that there will be no substantial detriment to public good for the grant of this variance in that its granting will not nullify or substantially derogate, derogate from the intent or the purpose of the bylaw. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with this application.
I think we should also state that it's because of the unique structure or whatever I've got over there, reference their structure, because that's a justification for it.
Board further finds that the structure is unique, is that correct?
Yes.
Hardship would exist without the granting of this variance, right?
Yes, yes.
And we should notice prior, we don't need to put in the date frame.
No, but probably construction vehicles.
Right, yeah, we don't, we don't need that, and, and we.
I think a general one there.
In addition, that for life of the, of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not any public street or road. A violation of the terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to GL Chapter 40A, Section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
Ryan, you said special permit, did you mean to say variance?
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, by the terms of this condition, be, this variance, thank you. May be enforced a violation of the zoning, Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to GL 40A, Section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time. Okay. Any discussion on the motion, all right?
But Chris second?
Zach, I was the second.
Okay, Chris, you're second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Granted, 5-0.
Thank you very much. Good read, evening.
Thank you. Do we have, attorney, do we have your email address? I'm sure it is, Rachel has it, right?
She has it, yes.
Okay. I'll be sending you a copy of the variance before we submit it to the town clerk.
Okay, thank you.
For your review, okay?
Case number 2024-03, DF, DFN, Inc., care of Daniel Cerber. The property is located at Zero Depot Road, Accessus, Accessus Map 64, Procel S1 in our zoning district. The applicant seeks a variance from 325-54B, non-conforming use, and 325 Attachment 1, Table 1, Use Regulation, to construct a large-scale, ground-mounted solar array pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws 325-52 and MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10. Anybody have a hard time finding this property?
Only on Google Earth.
Google Earth.
I did it a couple of years ago, the first time, I'm sorry. Because this was before us in 2020.
No, we were here.
Hmm?
What?
This was before us in 2020, we granted him.
Oh, before us, I thought, yeah, right, yeah.
We granted him a variance back then.
You know, honestly, guys, I didn't go back up myself either.
But, yeah, I went out looking, it was foreign, and that's, I forget, it would have been, I would do more. Yeah, I just did Google Earth, too. Did that last time, too. And I remember it, it's the only big gravel pit in that area, is my recollection. Good luck in finding Zero Depot.
Yeah.
Had residents calling me thinking it was next to Bukas, because that's where GPS, if you go Zero Depot, it puts you at Bukas.
Well, that's not a bad place to be, though.
Long as they're open.
Not if it's going to build 177 panels.
Okay, the border health and the conservation police departments have no issues with this proposed project, and, and the town plan, AKA the applicant, would present their case before the Planning Board for addition, for a new site plan review that had previously been approved. Was that done?
My understanding, it was done, the planning, site plan review was, was recently done, again.
Okay, that would have been on the night, at least, okay. All right, voting on the case would be Al, Dunne, you, David Nunley, Chris Murphy, David Ryer, and Kenneth Dixon. And I'd like to have the applicant represent themselves.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Brian Hergation, I'm a professional engineer, I work with PSC Group, and presenting the applicant, X Grid Incorporated, for this petition to the variance.
Al, did you, you're on the microphone.
No, excuse me.
Didn't mean to cut you off.
That's okay. Just, I'll back up a little bit, give you some history, as, as it was mentioned, we were before, before you, August 26th of 2020, so almost three and a half years ago, seeking the same variance, and it was granted. At that time, the applicant was a little bit ahead of the game because they had to wait for the, I guess it's called the rate study that's done with utility with Eversource and the various towns, and that, that, that study was a ways off, and it kept getting delayed and delayed. So they, they couldn't move forward with the project. And since that time, that variance has obviously expired. It was three and a half years ago. So we are before you seeking variance. There's been zero changes to the site plans. It's the exact same plans that were submitted. And, you know, the existing site, as you know, it's a gravel pit. It's right on the Harwich-Chatham Town Line, and access is actually through the town of Chatham, which you may, you may not have figured it out. Lance Avenue, it's actually an easement. And, um, so it's, it's not a use which is, it's not, it's, as you mentioned, it's in the our, our zoning district. It's not in the town's solar overlay district, and thus it requires the used variance. We have pretty unique conditions on the site, which would, which would justify the variance, that being the, the soil, soil conditions and topography. And, uh, you know, literal enforcement of the bylaw would involve a, a financial hardship because in order, the grades had been excavated, as it's a gravel pit, so a lot of material would have to be brought in. In addition to that, the easement, which is, I don't know the exact length of it, that would provide access, would have to be upgraded to town standards if you were gonna put like a residential subdivision there. So it would be a, a significant, um, financial undertaking in order to bring that up to standards for, say, a residential development. Further, um, you know, the current use is a sand pit with heavy machinery. It's, it's loud, it's a lot of trucks moving in and out, and the use with solar requires virtually, virtually no vehicle trips. They, they check on it less than, less than six times a year. They'll come, they'll cut the grass when it gets up about twelve inches, you know, a foot high. They cut it down to like six inches, and they check on the equipment, make sure that there's no broken panels, things like that, everything's working. But it's a very low, and, you know, there's no, very low intense use of the property. There's no impact on the school systems or on the roadways or anything like that. And, uh, and lastly, um, you know, in, I guess, May seventeenth, or May seventh, two thousand eighteen, annual town meeting, the town did create a, a large-scale, um, ground-mounted solar, uh, district in town, so the intent being to, to promote, uh, large-scale ground-mounted solar. And so even though this isn't in that zone, we believe it does keep with the, with the intent of the bylaw. That, that's really it. I'd like to, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Ken?
No questions. Okay, um, we've got the decommissioning plan here. I had it, oh, there it is. When will it be decommissioned? How long is this thing projected to run?
So there, it's twenty years, uh, it's a twenty-year lease, and they actually have an option for twenty-five if both parties want, if.
An additional twenty-five?
No, I'm sorry, an additional five. So the maximum, so in other words, it's either twenty to twenty-five years is the term. And then at that time, uh, it would be decommissioned. There, as you mentioned, there is a, a bond that would be posted, a decommissioning bond, and then it would re, uh, you know, the site would be brought back to the standards and,
And who, who is actually the applicant, the responsible party?
NextGrid, Inc.
NextGrid, okay. But they're not, okay, the owner is DFN, so NextGrid will have a lease?
Correct.
Property?
Yep.
Okay.
So, yeah, DFN, Stephen Clark is the owner, and he's the president of DFN Incorporated. But they're the owners.
And NextGrid will also be responsible for the duties under the operation and maintenance plan?
It will be a hundred percent NextGrid responsible, yes.
Okay. Uh, just, just for the board, I don't have any problem with them meeting the requirements of the variance. I think I voted for it last time.
Yes, sir.
My concern, and I think I expressed it last time, and unfortunately, I don't remember where we ended up on it, but the town has no mechanism to make sure, like, the maintenance and operation plan is actually performed in NextGrid. And even more concerning, there's no mechanism, if they don't decommission, for the town to get involved. So the question I have is, I, I think you need to go to the town manager and see if the town wants to require some kind of an escrow, because it's a hundred and eighty grand, estimate a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, a decommission. If they don't.
Isn't there a bond?
But, but that's a bond. That's a bond that they will put up.
There is a bond, where is that?
Correct. So if you look at, uh, page four of the decommissioning plan, and there's actually a, a Section three decommissioning cost estimate, so that hundred and seventy-eight thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars is a decommissioning bond essentially that they will have to put up, and so.
Okay, where does it say that they're gonna put up a bond? It says they estimated the cost, but I don't.
It's a financial surety.
Am I missing something?
Financial surety, the last sentence on page four.
The proposed financial security amount. Doesn't really say they're obligated to do it, it just says proposed financial surety amount. I mean, I think we need a firm commitment to protect the town, that they're gonna post a bond, and I think our approval needs to be conditioned on that. And I don't wanna stick the town with a hundred and eighty grand if these people go belly up.
I'm assuming you would have no, no objection to that?
We have no objection to that. They're, they're aware, they're ready, they're ready to put that money up.
Okay.
So it'll be.
My memory is, what you were saying was the last thing we spoke about, that we approved this thing, was the town had to get documentation from that.
Of the surety bond. Is that what we did last time?
Almost positive.
I can't remember, unfortunately, and, um, I wish, wish we had, what, you know, let's ask Rachel in the future, where we have prior board action, to give us a copy, like, of the variance. Not, I think of it now, or should have thought of it before, but just, just learned. But I would make that a condition. I, I think they clearly meet the requirements for.
If we're gonna do that, but.
If we're gonna do that, if we're going to do that, that was written in twenty twenty-one,
assuming a two percent yearly inflation. So if we're gonna put a specific amount in, I would say at least, or something like that, because it's gonna be more than one seventy-eight.
Well, why don't we back to the fact, we say that suit, a, a bond that's.
Covers the cost of.
That's, that's suitable.
Right.
To the town of Harwich.
Yes.
If I could ask a question, any idea if we were to update this decommissioning cost estimate, how it would change? Because this is probably a twenty, this is almost a four-year-old document.
Right, and it's, it was based on two percent.
Which I think would be very, is higher than two percent inflation.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna be done in twenty-five years, so we gotta, you gotta add, that's up to the town, they had it all, and figure it out. It's appreciably more than a hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
Correct. So I think we, our condition has to be that they need to submit a current decommissioning schedule, at which point we are gonna require the surety bond to cover that amount.
Actually, I would like to consider continuing it and let them give us a proposal of the form of the security bond that we can look at, as well as an update on the financials. We could have our side counsel take a look at the surety bond to make sure it's gonna cover the town. Because we don't wanna leave the town with a white elephant. That would, I remember we had all this discussion the last time.
I think that's reasonable.
It is. I'll second that motion.
Well, we're just a, a, just a discussion. Just discussion. That's all I have. I just, I'm concerned about that. And the surety probably ought to cover not just the closure, but their failure to adhere to the operation and maintenance plan. Because we don't wanna have that thing sit there rusting and maybe going into the groundwater or whatever if they suddenly go belly up and don't maintain it.
Is there a precedence for how this might be? Have you worked on one of these before?
I, I've worked, yeah, well, we've permitted a, a bunch of them. I've seen two of them constructed, um, as well. Yep. I mean, I can, you know, what I can tell you is it's in their best interest that, that the maintenance is done. It's very little maintenance on these, on these systems, um, but it's, it's in their best interests financially that, that they keep up with it. And if there is something.
I don't disagree, but things happen.
Sure.
Like, people go bankrupt and.
I think, and, and I don't, I don't have it committed to my memory, but I'm pretty sure that, uh, your solar bylaw outlines this, uh, this requirement for the decommissioning bond estimate. It's pretty, all of this, from what I've seen, my experience working in several different towns, they almost all adopt the state, the same exact solar, the language in the solar bylaws was, was good, uh, I think it was originally given by the state, and all these towns have pretty much adopted the same thing. So I, I don't have it committed to memory, so I can't quote to you exactly what their, what those requirements are.
I haven't looked at them myself.
And if there is any teeth in it for the town as well.
I know we've got them, but I haven't really looked at them. But we could do that. And I know the town has experience, because they put them over on the, um, what do we call, on our transfer station property. But we didn't have any, the Board of Appeals had no, um, input or concern with that, because it was town property.
I think it's our responsibility to ensure that the town realizes, the gentleman says, they're pretty common among the town, but that we have to ensure that the town is covered when this thing is decommissioned.
Yes.
It's not just decommissioning, and, and it's, it's also regarding, as you said, the proper maintenance, because obviously, they're not going to, I'm, I'm sure that this, this corporation is gonna maintain the solar system very well. But technologies change, and all of a sudden, nowhere, it could, it could become.
Non-economic.
Non-economic, and, and so there's no reason to maintain it.
Yeah.
So it's.
That's my concern.
Yeah, I mean, as long as that the solar array is an economic benefit, I'm sure it's gonna be maintained extremely well.
It could be the gasoline motor vehicle right now.
No, no, that's, that's true. So, um, I hope you don't mind the delay, but I, I do think we'd like to get, the, the board would probably like to get, we're gonna get full discussion here, we'd like to get some input from the town regarding what the.
Three twenty-five dash one forty-eight, financial surety. Proponents shall provide a form of surety, either through escrow, bond, or otherwise, to cover the cost of removal.
Right, and we need to know what that's gonna be.
Yeah. The, the amount, correct.
Right.
Well, I think that's.
That, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's what, that's why we prepared these, these estimates, because, right, I mean, I guess nobody, who knows how to, um, you know, the applicant is aware of what's in there. I mean, the town wouldn't have any means to really do that, I don't think, you know.
Well, they should update that and probably update the decommissioning plan, too, I think.
Well, the decommissioning was the one I would think needed to be addressed. I do believe that needs to be addressed.
Three years old, and maybe things have changed on decommissioning, I, I don't know.
Because our statute's pretty clear, it has, in no event to exceed a hundred and twenty-five percent of the cost of removal and compliance with additional requirements set forth herein. It's just that we don't know that a hundred and twenty-five percent of a document that's four years old.
Right.
Irrelevant.
Right.
No, I, I agree.
And I think we should have them update the operation and maintenance plan also. That's four years old, almost.
I, I can, I, from experience, I can tell you it will be the exact same.
With a new date.
Right. On that. Now, the, obviously, the decommissioning estimate is different, but what I'm just wondering is, um, you know, we're gonna update these costs, these amounts are obviously different because, as you said, they're over three years old. But, I mean, we were gonna, we typically, we use the two percent inflation. If they're, if that's not gonna satisfy the town, then I, it would be helpful to know that ahead of time so we can get it, get it right. The other question I have is, you know, is, would, would you guys entertain a condition of approval with that upon your review, satisfactory review of the new financials? Would you entertain that?
Well, we can certainly give you a straw vote.
Well, Brian, I'm inclined to make it a condition versus a continuance.
Can't. I don't, first of all, here's one, here's one reason why I, I said that very quickly. Part of my duty here is to stamp documents that we approved, and we've already said the fact that at the moment, this is four years old, just like the, on the decommissioning plan and the cost. So I can't stamp this in, because these, this, these costs aren't current. It's like it's not, not, it's like not having a current site plan. Now, maybe I'm reading this thing wrong, but David would.
I'm gonna make a motion and continue it, and get everything.
Yeah, and I'd like to review our photovoltaic regulations, and maybe that's an addition, a, a additional condition, that even though, you know, they're not in the zone, they have to comply with those requirements. I think we should review those and consider if they're good enough for people in the zone, they should be good enough for this project outside the zone, because they're asking us to create a new zone in effect by giving them a used variance. So I think we wanna look at those conditions, which I haven't done in any detail. A couple of years ago, I skimmed them, or whenever they came in last year. But if we think they're good, we should require them to adhere to them as a condition.
And we, we have. And, and, you know, that's what the site plan review process was, too, but, yeah, we've a hundred percent, we've adhered to all of that, that bylaw.
Right, but I, I would wanna craft the condition, look at them, not gonna do that tonight, in the same way, I don't think you should stamp anything until we get the new numbers, and if they need. And I think it's reasonable to ask that they should look at the decommissioning plan and the operation and maintenance plan. If they need to be updated, they ought to be updated. Why should we approve four-year-old plans? We don't do that for anybody else. And I, I believe they meet the variance requirements, but I also believe we have to be careful and protect the town here. Unlike the, um, solar panels over at the recycle, the town's not getting any revenue out of this. The applicant owner, they're making all the money, so we wanna.
There actually, there actually is a benefit to the, a financial benefit to the, to the town, to the, the people who are in the immediate service area of that system get, and I don't know what the number is, it's, it's cents on the dollar, but there is a, there is a financial, uh, benefit to the town as well. That's part of what the, the EverSources study with the D.O., D.O.A.E.
Well, maybe you could bring that next time, too, and show us the, the numbers.
All right, so we're gonna request a review and updates required of the January fifth, two thousand twenty-one decommissioning plan. We need to.
And a twenty twenty operation and maintenance plan. Because, you know, this industry, I think it's changing.
Rapidly, it is.
So. We wanna make sure they're, they use best practices. And they're gonna update the, the decommissioning numbers?
Yep. That's, yeah, that's in this one right here.
Yeah, I think that's, is it the last page in there?
Wrong one. It's this one. That's decommissioning.
Wow, you're right. Absolutely right. Yeah.
For the benefit of the board, and I did take the time to read over our solar stuff, they do talk about monitoring and maintenance, and we have a very specific, but to Dave's point, we have to make sure we're creating a zoo, new, a zoo zoning bo, or district in theory, that all of this applies to that. I mean, that makes all the sense in the world, and I also agree that we need the two updated. So I'm gonna change my position and support a continuance.
Does that, does that one forty-four only cover the, um, the zone, the solar panels, the, the larger A? But you're, you're referring to the fact that.
I believe it.
We're creating a new zone. This, this, the zoning's for the whole town. There is a district. But how does that differentiate?
I think this determines use. My opinion is this determines use, not zoning. So the, I think that these statutes, and maybe our city attorney needs to hold fine, I believe these statutes apply to any solar, large-scale solar plant. Regardless of where they're constructed.
Exactly, yeah. I mean, in fact, they just added in one forty-four, they just added a design standard for residential.
Yeah, this is, that doesn't apply to this.
I, I understand that. What I, my point is, they have larger A and residential in the same one. Clearly, that's not in any special district. That was just saying, I don't know if, if the special district, I don't know if we're creating a special zoning district.
Well, the residential is allowed by right. Anyone can put.
No, I, I shouldn't have brought that up. But my point was, they're, they're bringing it into the zoning, so it can't be far as special zoning district, if they're bringing in residential for larger A, if they're bringing in residential as well, they're the same. I think we should go for the continuance, because there's a lot of other things that is, the decommissioning costs way, way under, underestimating. Based on inflation over the last three years.
Yeah, and as far as, you know, not continuing, they've been, looking at Rachel's thing, they've not come forward, it's taken them three or four years to. They've not come forward, it's taken them three or four years to come back to us, so. Another continuance isn't going to kill them, in my opinion.
We just have to make sure that we're going to give you the information we need when you come back the next time.
Well, that's what I.
You're really clear on what we need.
Well, that's what I was going to ask you, because I'm sensing that people aren't happy with the two percent inflation. So if there, if there's, if that's, I don't want to come back in a month and have it be rejected and have to come back again.
I don't know what a proper, you know, percentage should be. You know, certainly, we, since this project, we've seen, you know, a higher inflation rate.
Right.
Why was the two percent there?
That's pretty standard.
Standard in two thousand twenty-one.
Well, I'm, on, on these, yeah, I know, I mean, but we'd, nonetheless, have a personal.
I mean, that number's got to be from either a state commission or some sort of person providing that number, you just don't pull one out, right?
I don't, yeah, I don't, and I don't have the answer to that. I don't know where the two percent came from.
So I don't think we, we're not going to, I would think, provide you that in Hummer, there's got to be some sort of standard number in this.
I don't think we're going to get our resistance in that regard, we just want to see new numbers.
Okay, understood.
I think that's speak for the Board, is that correct? We're most important with the bottom number.
Yes.
Yep.
And I'm assuming we're going to ask for the, submit all the numbers in advance of the meeting so that the town administrator can look at them.
I'm sorry, I was looking at something.
I'm assuming regarding particularly the surety bond, that we're going to look for the numbers prior to the meeting to give town administration a chance to take a look at, you know, that they, they agree with the surety bond. Or we can still, at that point, make sure that they approve it, but.
Yeah, I guess, unless, do you remember how detailed the surety bond requirements are in the bylaw there?
I can read it all out.
It just doesn't.
Three twenty-five.
Yeah.
One forty-eight.
Yeah.
Okay.
It merely says that proponents of a large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic project shall provide a form of surety, either through an escrow account, bond, or otherwise, to cover the cost of removal. In the event the town must remove the installation, remediate the landscape, in an amount and form determined to be readable by the planning board, but in no event to exceed more than one hundred and twenty-five percent of the cost of removal and compliance with additional requirements set forth herein.
So this has to go before the planning board?
Yeah, right, well, they're the ones that determine the financial surety, not us.
Right, that's what I figured, that's also, that's another thing, they're the ones that are going to require that, regardless of what's stamped, right? I mean, I, your point is you're stamping it, I didn't even consider that up in the beginning.
Yeah, anytime I, anything here, we're done, when we just get submitted to town clerk, it's the fact that I've approved, or the Board's approved, you know, all the documentation's there, and right at the moment, we're not approving the current maintenance plan with the, with the.
Four years old.
It's four years old with the cost structure in here.
So that's not just for guidance and background information, you actually have to approve a maintenance plan for a zoning issue? No, we would make it a condition to protect the town, we don't have to. But it sounds like it's in the bylaw, and the planning board has to. Well, except, that don't apply to this because it's not within the zone. Where, like I said, we're creating a new. But does it say the zone has to be within that zone, on that standard? It doesn't say anything at one forty, not one forty-four, why not?
Three twenty-five, one forty. It does not.
I don't know, we're taking their application, did they say that? Well, yes, we're creating a new zone because that use is not allowed in the zone of their property.
Is it?
They're in the R R zoning district.
It's not in a, it's not an allowed use in the R R zone, but I guess I would respectfully disagree that we're creating a new zone, we're just asking for a variance.
You're asking for a used variance.
A used variance.
You know, I said in effect.
Okay, yeah, I agree.
Technically, we don't have that power.
It's not a zoning situation as far as that, it's a used, it's a used variance.
Yeah, but if we, since it's a used variance, the planning board will have no jurisdiction unless we ask them to review the bond. Because they have.
Our bylaw says they have to review it, Dave. To be determined to be reasonable by the planning board.
Well, you know what, that's another question I think you should review either with the planning board, with town council, or town planner.
I've just asked my client, they were handling these updated approvals, and they, they were unable to, next grid was unable to come tonight, so they asked me to, to sit in for him. I've just texted him now, I, I don't know, I, I thought, he told me he's already gone back. I'm just confirming that that's planning board, so I don't know right now.
Is there your maintenance, is it right here? Monitoring, yeah. But there's also the designated, to Chris's point, there's a designated location where large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations may be sighted as of right. But you still got to go in front of the planning board for all of the other stuff. A lot of questions I think we need to. No, it's not, without really reading this thing through, I can't tell whether the planning board would have any kind of jurisdiction or not. Because I think they all imply the planning board has jurisdiction over those in the designated location. But whether they would have jurisdiction if we grant a used variance to look at this project, it's not at all clear to me, just looking at it quickly. So I think either you got to get probably an opinion at council, I don't think the planning board would know either, quite frankly.
It definitely has to go to council.
What's that?
My opinion, it definitely has to go to council.
Outside council, yeah, town council, Amy.
I read that, and that, like, to your point, I don't know if that even means, read that sentence.
Well, again, it's not clear. Because if you look at large-scale.
That's the next title.
Yeah, I know, I see that, but trying to figure out what's, what review, what are they talking about? A review of a large-scale solar ground-mounted, well, if that's the case, it has to be owned or operated by the town of Harwich or under agreements with the town of Harwich.
Then you go to this, that would be like, that just goes to another page.
Goes to this, right?
Right.
Yeah, but.
It's not falling under that paragraph, it's falling under this paragraph.
But what is a large-scale solar?
Anything bigger than two hundred and fifty KVA.
Anything larger than two fifty.
Yeah, anything larger than two hundred and fifty megawatts DC, I believe.
So that.
Rated name plate capacity.
So under one forty, three twenty-five, one forty B. Well, here, wait, yeah, look at three twenty-five, one forty, prior to construction, so on and so forth. All applicants in plan shall be filed with the planning board, and they give a list of everything that needs to be included, including a description of financial surety that satisfies three twenty-five, one forty-eight. So they have to go in front of the planning board in order to do anything, right? Yeah, but if you go back, it says. But are we, they're talking about large. Has everybody got approval, but it's getting rezoned?
No, it's not doing a rezoning.
Does that planning board approval, Sunset also, within six months or a year, whatever the timing is?
Correct.
So you have to go in front of the planning board.
Yeah, I, I believe they already did for the site plan review, that everything under your solar bylaw, I believe, is permitted through the planning board.
Right.
This is an extra step because we need a variance. And I'm just, hopefully, I'm going to get it, I might not get it tonight, I was looking for that confirmation from the client. But I know he's already been back through, and they went through the site plan again. And presumably, the surety was already brought up, so I don't, I guess, I don't know the answer now, but we may find out that this Board doesn't have the authority to, to change that surety, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
Well, we have the authority to require it to be reviewed and be conditioned.
Right.
Okay, so that's what we're doing here, and since everything we've got so far are four-year-old plans in general. And given how inflation has hit us pretty strong, looking at the construction industry and over the last couple of years, you know, the two percent doesn't make sense, and we at least need to start with a new, a new base for, for costs. Then maybe go to two percent.
Just out of curiosity, if he's already gone to the planning board and they've already approved to the surety bond at the two percent as it is?
Then we'd be, what I'm, what I'm seeing here, we'd be good to go.
Yes.
Okay, I found it. Three twenty-five, one thirty-eight, purpose and intent, it says, provisions set forth in this section, the whole section, shall apply to the construction, operation, and/or repair of large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations. And then when we go down to the definitions in three twenty-five, one thirty-nine, the large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation shall be, if you look at the last sentence, shall be owned and operated by either the town of Harwich or under agreements with the town of Harwich. So this project, to me anyway, clearly does not fall under these provisions unless we make it a requirement by reason of condition. And we need to involve the planning board because they don't have any jurisdiction. Why, why does it not fall under this? Because this project is neither owned nor operated by the town of Harwich, nor does the town have any agreement connected with the ownership or operation of this project.
There isn't, there is an agreement, though, and that's part of the, what I was trying to explain, the, and I did a poor job. The whole financial mechanism to it is, is an agreement with the town.
You have an agreement with the town?
That's, that's my understanding of, because there is a whole financial component to it.
You need to produce that to us, it's not been made part of our documentation.
But I'm not sure it's provided to us or if it's provided to the planning.
I think if they've got the agreement with the town, if in fact they have a signed agreement with the town, then yes, it goes to planning. But if not, planning has no jurisdiction.
Right, he's saying they do.
Right, but we haven't seen it, so, and unless I see it, I don't believe it. I'm not from Missouri, but seeing is believing, so.
Make that part of your note.
That should be part of your package, as far as I'm concerned. Should be part of your submission package to us, so we can take a look and see what it says. It doesn't look like there is a third option, though, either it's owned by the town, or it's under agreement with the town, there's no third.
Correct.
Or they can do whatever they want without an agreement, they have to do one of these, too.
Right.
The answer, everything is going to be updated, so within that update that we get, and then we'll get continued to, that information that we're discussing is going to also include in that, because it's going to have to go back to the planning board. If they deny it, and it's not their responsibility, then we will be made aware of it.
Well, whether they say they're responsible or not, I want to see a copy of the agreement.
Right.
Obviously, information from the planning board pertinent to this case would have been helpful if they did meet and what the planning board agreed to. And we don't have that information, so it's difficult for us, we're, we're, we're in a fog.
If, if they were meeting next week, could we approve it?
I believe they were actually, no.
You know what I'm saying, they don't have to have already have met, as long as they have the intent and plan to meet. Next week, we wouldn't know what the outcome was, they may have left all this as-is.
I believe that actually the meeting took place on, on January ninth.
That was when the planning board meeting was, huh?
That was when.
January nine.
January ninth. There was a meeting on January ninth. I'm not receipt of anything, I, I thought tonight I'd be being presented with information regarding the planning board review. You know, you weren't prepared to present anything as a result of what the planning board did or did not do to fill in the gaps we have before we could, you know, make a decision.
I do have notation that the planning board, as you just said, met on the ninth of January.
Yeah.
On this case, as well as the one prior.
That's consistent with what I, what I thought, but I don't have the, I don't have any of the information, so.
At the moment, I've got four conditions in general. One is the review and updates required of the January fifth, two thousand twenty-one decommissioning plan. Review and update of the operation and maintenance plan dated as required, dated July twentieth, July two thousand twenty. Subject to review and approval of the town of Harwich of the, of the surety bonds for the decommissioning of the solar project as well as its ongoing maintenance and upkeep, upkeep of said solar project. Confirmation this live-scale solar photovoltaic, I pronounced that perhaps incorrectly, installation is under agreement with the town of Harwich.
Or a copy of the agreement.
Confirmation and copy of the agreement, because that would actually have to be probably referred to and stamped in with everything else.
Yeah, I think we would want to make compliance a condition, compliance with the agreement. So I think we need to look at it and make sure that we're comfortable that the town is protected.
I hate to muddy the water, but it's time to have the discussion. Because you just said the surety bond for the purpose of decommissioning and maintenance, but Brian, those are two separate statutes in our ordinances. Three twenty-five, one forty-eight talks about the financial surety, it does not address maintenance. Three twenty-five, one forty-six addresses maintenance, but a surety bond is not required for maintenance.
Oh.
Correct.
Okay.
It's only required for decommissioning.
It's a decommissioning bond estimate.
I'll get rid of that, thank you.
But we could require that if we wanted to.
By what jurisdiction, not by this?
Just as a condition.
What gives us that authority?
Because the ability to put conditions on the granting of either a special permit or variance, that's statutory.
How are they going to get a surety bond for ongoing maintenance, if it's, pick a number, if it's a thousand dollars a year, what's, how are you going to?
I guess I would, do you require that for other sites? I mean, how is it any other, different than any other sites? The structure, it's got, you know, it has landscaping, it has stormwater management features, but so do all other sites. Do you, do you require, you know?
That's a valid point. Okay.
All right, so I took that out of it. Was there any other conditions that need to be checked in on?
Not somewhere.
No.
So does the petitioner need to request a continuance?
Yes.
Yeah, it's.
Or we can just move on our own to continue, yeah, we can move to continue the case.
Okay, so let's piece some of this together.
Any objections to a continuance versus a denial?
No.
Denial, you got to wait six months, sure.
Or years.
Sometimes if there's no significant changes. So do you think you'd be able to get them back for the February meeting?
We will, yes, absolutely, the next meeting.
You don't want to go to the March meeting?
Nope, February would be great if it's available.
Yeah, the March meeting.
We'll get all this straightened out, I promise.
All right, I'll move, we continue the case to our next meeting in February.
I second that.
Yeah, is anybody here that's not going to be here in February?
Hey, you're not going to be here in February?
No.
All right.
How does that work? Will we need two out of three, or?
We still have five that heard the, heard the discussion.
Oh, because you'll, all right, because you'll be voting instead of.
I'll also, I'll have both John Argus and, and Tim Bailey, there's a rule called a Mullen Rule, which is if they go over the video recording of this meeting and look at all the documentation that was done regarding this meeting, and they attest the fact that they've done that, per the Mullen Rule, they'd be eligible to be able to vote and participate and, and vote at the, at the continuing meeting. So just in case, so we're going to have a quorum.
Gotcha.
And I'll get that accomplished with the Mullen Rule and have these guys also, you know, just review the meeting tape and the documentation.
Okay.
All right, so it won't be a problem. So we have a motion to continue, actually, you made the motion?
I made the motion and Ken seconded.
To the February, and, it's the twenty-eighth? To the February, and, um, it's the twenty-eighth?
I don't remember.
Twenty-nine days in February this year. Leap year.
Yeah.
Okay, February twenty-eighth meeting. Dave and Ken, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Hey, thanks for your time and, uh,
Yep.
Sorry we didn't have information from the planning board.
No, I understand, you know, it's, uh, it's been three and a half years and, and that's, you know.
Are you going to keep?
Makes sense. I live in Plymouth, right over the bridge, so.
All right, thank you very much.
Good night. All right, um, are the cases getting harder or am I getting older? Or both?
Want to take just a short, four-minute, five-minute break?
Okay.
Right back.
I don't know the answer to that question. Yeah, I think it's both.
Be careful on how you answer that.
Yeah.
It's like with the new times, I mean, I love getting home for bedtime story time. My kids go to bed at eight-thirty, so if I can get home, I can help them get back. With the six-thirty, I mean, that summer, our cases go too late. So the winters.
How old are you kids?
You do a piggyback, you go to bed?
Piggyback? No.
No?
I don't know. I try to keep it as quiet. Piggyback is exercise and not moving. We need it calm and quiet.
Is that what you did?
Sure.
One more you can remember.
How old are you?
He's got grandkids older than you.
He's telling me, yeah. Not older than me, but older than my kids.
How old are you?
Forty-six.
And there's the baby.
Yeah, forty-six.
Is Friday working for you?
Sure.
You didn't respond.
I said I did.
Not on the email?
Huh? No, I texted you.
You didn't? On Friday?
No, 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 I hadn't, I was, I did not see Friday.
Yeah, we sent, I sent it out, emailed to you and Dean, said Friday is one option.
Okay.
And then Dean ran out the, the location options. I said red river Bobby.
No, I, I didn't, uh.
Assuming this is not a zoning board.
No. Although, all three of us were, were or are on the zoning board. It would have been a joy for you to see Dean in action on the zoning board.
He was on this board, or?
Yeah, yeah, his goal was to sow confusion and, and.
Were you on the board with him at that time?
I only, actually, I started the day, the, the meeting I started was the meeting E. It might have been a couple hours, but he basically resigned, and I was his replacement, basically. He got his replacement.
Yeah, Mr. Cre, Mr., he was Bill Crowell.
Yeah.
Who, no, he would mispronounce Bill's name intentionally every time he read it.
Just to.
Yeah.
Crowell, no, he'd call it Crowell.
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 Just to get them going.
Yeah.
And in the last meeting, he was the clerk, the last meeting, he called the case and he pronounced the name. And Bill just sat down. I can't believe this. Went to Mahoney's last night, the bar, the restaurant in Orleans.
How was it?
That was really good.
Was it?
Yes.
One of my favorite spots up there.
Good to know.
Huh?
Which one?
Mahoney's. Mahoney's. I'd never, I've heard good things about it, everyone says, and I just had, it's not, I just hadn't gotten to it. Finally went there last night, they had the tuna bonees. And basically they take sashimi, great tuna, real tuna, you know, chunk of tuna, but they cook it, they cook it well done. It's not, but it's like it replaces the burger, so it's a little healthy of that. And guy who's next to me, we have all three of us.
Every time I go down to the urologist, there's another guy that gets that license plate with all of that, either prostate or bladder cancer. But the agent.
What do you normally get?
Do you have a?
I mean, fish and steak, they, they really seem like they.
You in the service?
Well, same thing, same thing.
But it wasn't age or.
It is a nice, I would say, my issue started in Germany with asbestos.
Okay. The Army?
Yeah.
Yeah. I get it completely. I'm sure when they cleared our, they put it down, but I'm sure it was really in the water. We got all the water there.
Chris, was that Mahoney's? Was it sold, you know? Are they the same people that been operating here in Harlem?
I don't know.
You go to Providence or you go to Boston for health care?
No, I just go down to the Urologist.
Recently, like the last two, three years, it seemed like there might have been a change like that.
Yeah.
But it might also have been, came on my radar a couple of years ago, and that's what I'm.
Well, between the Medicare, on top of the Medicare, we pay another random month for health insurance, so I'm using, using.
I asked my brother, I was with my brother and friend of ours.
My wife's.
We were there. I'll ask him, he's been going there.
Prior, you know, her employee, retired green insurance. Good insurance. Even in the group, he's like a thou, just went up this year, a thousand and twenty-four a month. Well, we have Medicare under it, yeah.
She's got a supplemental, but I only have the advantage plan, so I don't have any other fee, other than the social credit.
It used to be.
And I don't use it.
But this one, I was.
Okay, guys.
To give it up.
German over, okay. All right, first of all, approval of the minutes.
Do we have a discussion on that? Brian?
Yes.
Yeah, there's an awful lot of, well, two things. I don't know if the voting members, if they should have full names as opposed to Al and Ken and so-and-so. Or, Ken, I don't know if that's an issue. That was my bigger concern.
Oh, yeah, where's the, I didn't notice the fact that voting was.
They all by first, you know, just members of the voting board, right in the very first one, bottom of the first page, Al, Dave, Tim, John, Ken. Does it matter that they're not?
Oh, okay, actually, I'm looking at, are you looking at the revised minutes?
No.
Okay, the minutes that were, were given to you tonight, they were, they were, when you came in.
That's the December twenty-seventh minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I had made some changes, so, so you look at the first page, members voting for, you know, you get page one.
Yep.
Members of the board voting, it's got full names.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
There's an awful, my other comment was, there's a lot of, I think, too much discussion. If you look at page two, Mr. Donahue said, Mr. Ryer said, Mr. Sullivan said, Mr. Speakman said, Mr. Crowell, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Hand, Mr. Ryer. That, I was surprised to see, and other than.
Usually, there was significant discussion, and maybe you summarized some of the main points.
Yeah, but not each time we talk.
Well, I don't know, I.
Huh? Don't talk.
Aren't they saying they're using kind of a, a machine to do this?
I, I prefer, no, I, I don't know what they do. I prefer that we don't, um, I, I, my suggestion is we, we, we critique missing information and, and incorrect information, and how they want to, um, because they have guidelines from the town administration on how the, how the minutes are supposed to be done.
Yeah, this is, this is their format.
Yeah, so.
This is new, right?
Right.
If you look at our previous minutes, it doesn't look like this.
Right, so they have a, they have some new guidelines on how minutes are supposed to be handled.
And they got new people in there too, so.
Right, so I don't want to, I guess my recommendation is we, we, um, critique and, and update incorrect information and missing information that we think should have been addressed. Other than that, I don't want to get into the format and what they include of the session. I prefer not, I mean.
Is it going to discourage conversation on our behalf if we know everything we say is going to be recorded?
It's recorded anyways.
Recorded, it's on the video. I, I understand that. Yeah.
It's not going to.
Good question.
Yeah, no, good, no, good question. I, I, but, uh, trust me, people, if anyone's interested in this meeting, they're going to be calling up the video, they're not going to be seeking out an agenda, uh, I mean, a minutes of the meeting. They might later on, obviously, uh, to make sure that the minutes, uh, correctly, uh, interpret the actual, the actual meeting. I mean, you know, it's, I mean, sometimes I've gone back in the minutes and I've turned on the video and said, I don't remember it this way, and I, and I realized it, and I made corrections based upon the video, because, you know, a mistake was made.
All right, I have no other discussion.
Okay. Yeah, the, the original draft had mistakes, like in the last case, you know, it had, um, had Al, had Al voting on the last case as opposed to myself who was voting. Okay. Other than that, uh, anybody else, and those are good, again, Ken, good comment on that. Anybody else have any comments regarding the minutes? All right, um, I'd like to hear a motion to approve the minutes.
So who?
Okay, motion Al, second by Dave.
Al's second, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so. All right, so now there was requests of the zoning compliance officer from Rachel to amend the ZBA application. So, yeah, she just basically, we had discussed that before, and she just requested we, um, she had a potential, first of all, there was a discussion about reducing the number of copies that a customer needed, a customer, an applicant needed. But, um, anyways, she's, dear board members, I would like to request a change to be made to the ZB application. Under the contact information portion of the application, I would like to request an applicant's email to be added to the session.
Sounds reasonable.
All right.
Nice to enter this century.
Okay, um, I'd like to have a, have a, any discussion on that? Okay, um, I'd like to hear a motion on that. So move, okay. Chris, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
You know, she made the change we talked about, approved last time.
She, yeah, she, she made the change for the, the larger.
Big plans.
The big plans. Okay, and, and what I did tell her was.
More helpful.
Yeah. What I did tell her regarding, because it's, you know, we had documentation, um, for the January meeting was, had to be submitted by the, you know, the December twenty-ninth, whatever. So there are some people that might have already thought, already were working on the old thing.
Yes.
And we, and I said, no, not a problem for the January meeting.
Right.
If the plans didn't come in full, but going forward, that's what we needed. Okay, all right. Okay. Oh, okay, an old business. There's a request here from Bayside. Now, if you all remember here, this is the Route one, uh, Route twenty-eight, one hundred, Route one twenty-eight, that's the, that's the location where we, they put in a, did a, took the garage and they turned into a, a small apartment.
Right.
Okay, that ended up being approved by the planning board, so now that they're, their application in a case before us. I mean, and they were given a continuance at that particular point.
That's the one that's way down the West Howard, near the Dennis Lane.
Correct. Okay, so, uh, they've requested, uh, withdrawal of the, the variance on the two-family application.
Vote on that.
Yes, I believe we do. And they've requested that any fees that they were paid, that were paid be taken in consideration for any future applications for variance for the same property. Now, um, seeing the fact we determined that they shouldn't have been, it was in front of the planning board and not the zoning board, and I believe they came here and they applied base point advice they had gotten from the, from the building department. I would agree if this, I would recommend if they do come before the board, because obviously I do think they're going to be coming before us, because I think at some point this is, Bayside is going to be, was buying the property, if I recall, is going to be, wanting to be in front of us perhaps for another redevelopment of that site.
Well, just want to waive the fees.
So we're going to, we're going to, whatever, no, we're going to waive the amount they already paid. The fees could be higher next time.
Refresh my memory, what was the project? Why did they think they needed a variance?
They came for us because they wanted to put in a two-family residence on the, on that property. It's a commercial property, and, um, and it turned out, and we thought, it turned out that a two-family, a multi, a three-family could be built there and approved by the planning board, you know, by the bylaws, and, and, uh, we, we felt the fact that had to go back to the planning board, which it did, and the planning board finally approved the project. But it was, so they had a front, they had a front.
They had several, it was a multifamily home, and it's like.
They, they, they had a main residence, single-family residence in the front, and they had several garages.
Right.
One of the garages, they were going to gut it and turn into a, a second, another residence.
Oh, I was in here for that meeting, that's why I don't remember anything about it.
Okay.
Was that the January meeting?
No, no, it was wild ago, probably six months ago, two months ago? A year ago.
Yeah, you were here.
A year ago.
Eleven months ago.
Okay, no wonder I don't remember. I don't remember what I had for breakfast. I remember a year ago.
I remember that case. So what motion?
I mean, did you have, did you, did your breakfast include fiber? That's, that's what we want on that, anyway.
It seems pretty straightforward. They want their fee. They were giving bad guys. They want their fee applied to future ones.
Apply to a future fee.
That seems reasonable.
Okay, so, um, I'd like to make the motion, we do that. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Here we go, fee. Toward the new fee. So basically, we're, we're granting withdrawal of the, uh, of the case, of the, of the, of the case, and allowing the applicant, for, you know, for any future applications for a variance, for a future application for a variance of the same property, we'll allow the, the fee that was paid for this case, uh, which was, uh, uh, the case number, oh, two thousand twenty-three dash twelve. That case number to be applied towards the fees, application fees for a future, uh, case on the same property, whether it's a variance or a special permit.
Okay. Yeah, I'd just like to point out that we're letting them withdraw, but it doesn't necessarily mean the planning board is correct, that they don't need a variance. So that could come up again depending, you know, what they want to do.
Right, the planning board did approve the residence, but some, doesn't, you're absolutely right.
The planning board.
Building apartment may see it differently again.
Might feel they don't need a variance, but we might feel differently if they come back in front of us and look at it again. I, I don't know, I mean, I don't remember anything about it, but.
So, um, I, I agree. And, and one question comes up, like, tonight in the case with four sixty-six. Now, we have residential properties that are on commercial zoned areas. So, when they come before us, it's, it's a residence, and it's on a commercial land, can, and if, can we grant them, does it, does it fall under?
Did we approve, did we approve this, that motion, by the way?
Oh, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Who seconded? I apologize.
I did.
Okay, Chris. All those in favor? Okay, approved six, thank you, Chris. So, so tonight, you know, on four sixty-six, now, um, if we have a residence that's on a commercial property. So, so tonight, you know, on four sixty-six, now, um, if we have a residence that's on a commercial property.
It's grandfathered in?
But do they have to apply for a special permit, or can they, or do they have to apply a variance, or do they have to apply for a special permit? If they wanted to put an addition on?
It's, it's a residence, so.
If it's a one or two family, it would fall under special permit. It's the other structure.
It's a structure we're talking about, not the, not the zoning.
Right. Right, but if it's another structure, like a garage, then they need a variance, unless it's a garage that qualifies.
So it's based upon, we're doing it based upon the structure, not the fact of the, of the zone that it's sitting on. Okay. All right. Okay, so we took care of that one. Uh, all right, discussion on split lots. So, the last, last meeting, we were, we had a discussion, and I followed up with you guys with the, with the memo that I sent to the, um, the planning, planning board director, as well as to Rachel and, and Jack me, regarding the various, you know, zoning situations that we were looking at, okay, for changes. And, um, I had sent that out to you guys, uh, I don't know, it's a copy over here someplace. Anyways, part of it was, we decided that, that maybe, we, we discussed the fact that maybe a, a change in the zoning laws regarding, you know, regarding split, uh, split lot, zone, may not be necessary if we only, if it was only gonna impact a few parcels in town. So we asked Rachel to do a rough estimate. So according to her rough estimate, we're somewhere in the two hundred, you know, she said two oh seven, but in that two hundred range of lots in town that are in split lots. And, and we determined, the discussion was that our zoning regulations do not adequately describe or have rules for split lot parcels. So, uh, my recommendation is that based upon the fact we have a two hundred lots in town, that the, um, the zoning board support, which will, will be a part of, you know, creating, you know, writing a, uh, a new zoning, uh, regulations regarding split lot zones.
So how many, it's two hundred and seven. If it was two hundred and seven in the city of Houston, that would be one billion to one percent of all the lots, right? How many, what percentage of the lots is two hundred and seven?
I have no idea.
I mean, the chances of one of these two oh seven coming in front of us, probably gonna happen every two or three years, maybe?
Who knows? They've only, they've only been twice in the last three years and I'm aware of.
I think we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't need solving.
So even with.
It's less than half of one percent, Chris, that's your question? It's less than a half of one percent.
Yeah.
We've had so few come before us.
And I'd probably lower than that.
Why don't we just do it on a case by case?
All right, so, so you, our opinion is, even though with two hundred units here, we still, we prefer.
Most of those are never gonna come before us.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna go case by case.
You know, John's not here, so I'll represent his position on this, uh, as I understood it. He was only, he wasn't saying we should make stuff up, but rather, he was looking for specific guidance. That was his whole concept here, because they had two in the last three years. We are indeed making it up each time because we don't have precedent, we don't have guidelines. That was his desire, to give us something to follow. Now, I don't know that it behooves, or I should say, doesn't hinder us as a ZBA if the planning department wants to create a zoning discussion over, or statute over on this, and again, I'm representing John's opinion here.
But we do have the opinion of council now to guide us.
You got CH one and RH one, then you have CH one and RN. It's like, there's so many variables. Let's just take the one we just had on Depot. Depot, Depot. If the house was not on the resident, on the commercial, but the residential, would that have interpreted differently? The fact that it was on the residential made it a little more complicated, if it was on the res, if it was on the commercial, if it was on the residential part of that split lot, could they have put the, the, the storage facility on the residential part? My point is, there's so many variabilities.
Well, yes, but.
Twenty different options here, and each one of those, well, where's the structure sit? They're all.
Well, Chris, good point, but typically, on the zoning, the split zoning regulations that I've researched and read in different towns, they basically just do a basic formula that just says, you know, how it's, how it's handled, regardless of what the districts are. Okay? So, whatever the, in most of them, whatever the higher requirement is, that becomes a predominant, um, overlay for the, for the parcel, uh, up to a certain percentage of square feet. Like, you know, it's, it's, so, um, so they, it doesn't, the different variables on most of the, most of the zoning regulations that are out there on split lots, on the towns, it, it's not a factor as to what the zone is, it, whether it could be, what the combination is. They look at what the predominant zone is of the higher requirement, you know, which be the fact that, you know, like in this case on, on Depot, we have, the, the residential allows thirty percent, uh, site coverage, but commercial allows eighty. Well, a town split lot, zone district, they have, they have regulations, they'd, they'd have to go by the thirty. Okay? Even though it's split lot, they'd have to be going by, for the whole lot, the thirty percent. That's, that's what a lot of towns do, that's what some towns do. Uh, in some, anyways.
The word on appeals board, and I use the word appeals, consequently, we can make a decision, otherwise it wouldn't be before us.
Well, that's true. So what, 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 I think what you guys are saying tonight to me is the fact that the appeals board doesn't need to be a part of whatever you wanna create for a zoning district, for a split zone. If you guys wanna go forward with it, fine, but we don't think it's a necessity.
We'll deal with it in the one-off, every couple of years.
Right. If they wanna do, if you guys, you wanna do it, that's great, but we don't think, we don't think it's a necessity to, to come up with a new zoning regulation for split lots. And if they do.
Might feel, but I'm.
Right. And if they do come up with one, that's great, we'll, we'll deal with it.
I mean, if we start to see a whole bunch of them, then we might wanna rethink it, but they come up so infrequently, it just doesn't seem worthwhile.
Yeah, and I think the, the one thing that we might have asked Rachel also was, of all these, you know, how many are vacant? Okay, there's no, no property on it right now.
Don't, don't saddle.
Now, I'm, I'm. I'm not gonna do that.
She's already busy enough.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, just something I'm trying to say here is that, you know, so I, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a big issue. We may not get another one for another couple of years.
Okay.
Of course, you know, the, butter to the cases, it's all started.
Correct, he's very, he's got his eyes wide open here.
He's already thinking about it.
Well, he's already laid it what he would like to do and.
Okay. All right.
Make a, uh, the other thing. If you could ask Rachel to supply the board with, uh, copies of the decision in that, whatever it was, twenty twenty or whatever the date was, the Fultova, Fultaya case, the first one, when we granted them a variance, get the board copies of variance. Yeah, that would be a good thing, I think, for the board to have.
All right, not on the agenda, but, um, I'm gonna bring it up anyways. Is, guy, I sent you all information regarding the State Ethics Commission's Conflict of Interest Law. All right, um, we actually do something, I haven't done, so I, I did go through and I did take the test, did the review. Took about fifty-five, actually, it took me a little over an hour, went online and do it, okay? So, that's required, you all requested it completed up by the end of February. Okay, and when you, you set up the account.
That was April, but, okay. It is April.
Well, I think it was February.
You sent for weather up and said April.
I did? Okay, well, um, whatever, whatever is on that requirement.
One February is tomorrow.
Is it? I thought, I thought it was the end of, actually, was it, was it, it was April?
I gotta do it in February, yeah, so.
All right, so.
And I thought it said if we did it last year, we don't have to do it, we just have to sign something.
It's every other year, but I thought I had done it.
I thought I did it last year as well.
And I looked into it, and they don't have me recorded as being done.
We all did it last year, that's a systems problem.
So, um, the, uh.
I was swearing, I did, I went through all my paperwork.
Well, okay, there's, there's the Conflict of Interest Law, and then there's, what was it, was it called anything differently? Cause they had a lot more question.
Training we had to go through, and there was also, uh.
That wasn't Conflict of Interest, that was, no, that was, um.
Harassment.
Yeah, that's, that's, um.
That was one we had to do.
Oh, what's it, not, not ethics, what's it, um.
Workplace, something, open meeting?
No, it was open meeting, but I, I, this was a first, when I went through, I thought I had done it, but I went through this thing, and I hadn't, I'm, I'm pretty sure I hadn't done it before. So this is new.
I know I've done that. I definitely have done this Conflict of Interest, cause you sit there and they have the scenarios, and George is sitting in a meeting and such and such happens, is he.
They only had, I, I only had, they only had a couple of those.
Yeah.
I've got like five or six of my records, but I don't have, I know I took it last year.
All right, well, you know, if you got a chance, we, we need to have record of it, so please do it, and then hopefully we don't have to repeat it again.
April fifth was the deadline on your email.
Okay. So guys, April fourth. Let's get it, let's get it done a day early, all right? I believe that, anybody have, uh, anything else need to discuss?
No.
Okay. I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 At eight fifty-five, cause this clock is two minutes slow.